Hey, yeah. We're good. Yep, matter of fact. So you ready, Susan? Okay. If you have stand will be led word of prayer by Commissioner Melton to remain standing for our pledge.
This prayer, most holy God, Father, will give you thanks and praise, Father, for all the blessing you give us every day, Father. Father, we'd ask this morning that you give us discernment and wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of Van Jack County, Father. We'd ask that you bless this nation, Father. Continue to lead and guide and direct us and forgive us for shortcomings. We give you the praise and Jesus now.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Now to order the regular session of Van Jack County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, June the eighth, twenty twenty-two at nine oh three. A M. Announced form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners Court and approval of same for May the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two and May the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion or corrections to the minute? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
So move, Pearson.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment? I would, I just got off the phone with Cheryl Williams. And she's got an issue with the election, the election people getting paid off on at a reasonable, she said they're they're the May the seventh, they have to wait a month to get paid and stuff. And she said, uh, she's talked to Kenny, she I don't know who else she's talked to. But she said it's up to the Commissioners Court now. I said, well, I'll mention it too. We got an issue there about the election.
Well, I saw where we we got some live checks for that. It showed four of them in the thing this morning to cut the live check Cheryl and those are the three other people.
I'm gonna comment on it. Those four, uh, when they filled out their sheet that they fill out on election day, they should read that in the evening. They put all of their information at the bottom of the sheet, which is where we took the twenty-five dollars for the pink ad of the equipment. The judges usually are the ones that do that part of it. The hours are actually only done at the very top of the sheet. That's where Kenny's department pays off of. And then the bottom part of the twenty-five dollars comes out of a different line item and that's something that Herman takes care of down there. So they didn't catch their hours up there because their information wasn't done at the top. There was four of them. Yeah. When she called me, I pulled the sheet, I went and talked to April and immediately they noticed the problem, took care of it immediately. That was the way that Foreman wouldn't show the Commissioners that on how they filled out their forms.
Okay.
There was four checks. They should go on to me. I got four checks that day. Give them to her, she need the mail, pass them out all the way, all of them that her control there. Well, that same day we got them. And you know, I don't know what went on mail. Someone got them like the next day and someone didn't get them till this week.
One person paid Tarzan. She was here actually when we took the check I gave her.
Yeah, but let you know, you might have received email and everything.
And she was complaining about some good pay later.
Yeah.
Now, I told her, oh, will we pay late? The ones that have not turned in their information, we have that issue. We got that issue back from Dan still.
No.
People don't don't turn in their stuff. Have stuff, keep putting, send them all over and pay.
We still have two, to my knowledge, that we still haven't paid because they haven't turned in their information.
As soon as we get it.
Okay.
Just so you'll know, that's where we are. They get paid as soon as we get it.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any question or discussion about the bills that need to be ratified for payment? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements or anything? Okay.
I just want to remind everyone that we are doing a cyber security training. And everyone, we've seen an email that needed to be that explained in our goal to be free by the end of June, I can start getting follow-up that are going to take impact to let them know who's still need to be put announced now to all the partners.
Okay. Okay, any other announcements?
Okay, we're gonna have to shut down our office on Friday because we have an upgrade committee on tower technology. And we're not gonna be able to do any recordings versus there's licenses and events. So on that day, everybody's working the work. And we'll be doing cybersecurity. We've got other stuff we've got to do for top technologies to be ready to switch our stuff over to our system.
Okay.
I will answer.
Our talk is they closed for us this Friday.
For recording.
Okay. Any other general business? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, do you mind signing up for public comment? No one signed up. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider approval and enter uh, issuance of proclamation recognized in June as elder abuse prevention month. Is there someone here to represent that? Was Keegan or did? He was supposed to be here. Okay. We have a proclamation before you declaring, uh, June is elder abuse prevention month. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? So I'm gonna got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any question, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight, discuss and consider plat approval for White Fines estate located on Windsor County Road fifteen fourteen and precinct one.
Yes, gentlemen, that's mine. Got Mr. Curtis and his associates back here with us today. Uh, this is a subdivision are putting in, there'll be a tier one. And they've already gone through the process with an engineer. So it's already been approved through him. So he was able to get in quickly. We're gonna turn it on Friday, giving us here today. So once again, I'm gonna ask to waive the second seven hundred and fifty dollar fee as it corresponds with the invoice from the engineer that we were willing to pay ourselves. Also with this one, I'm asking for a variance on the road. They asked to add more base material than chip seal the road versus the standards in the subdivision policy. And they want to wait till after they finish construction before they do chip seal. So they've also put up a bond to ensure that that gets completed. So I'd like to ask for a variance on that as well.
Okay. And that's in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Is there any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, discuss and consider a protocol for requested fire inspections. Uh, did you want to address that?
I did. I just put this on there so we can work together with our departments, with our fire marshal's office, our treasury's office and a clerk's office on to to get us a the plan on how we're gonna do this. These, uh, all of these inspections. Correct me if I if I go wrong, Sean. All these inspections are not required by the county, but they're required by the state. They can, the people that need inspection can hire the county to do the the inspection, which we should, because we have staff available for their convenience and there's a fee in it. But the the problem is coming in is that some departments say, no, we don't do that. And some departments say, yes, we do. And the county does perform these things. So I'm here to bring all y'all together so we can all get on the same page on how we're doing. So I'd like to take suggestions from Susan's department and Kenny's department and see if we can work this out and only one we're hurting is ourselves and the customers out there that we're trying to take care of, citizen of Van Zand County. So I want to put it on there. I can work it out myself, but I'd rather work it out for the whole.
Okay. Okay, Susan, Sean, how y'all gonna work it?
To what he has to say about it and you know.
Okay.
So we do have a fee schedule, uh, that I found, uh, that was approved by the court. Uh, I've got a, I don't have a twenty-two copy, but I have a twenty and a twenty-one. Basically in line with each other on that. So we do, the court has approved and established fees for certain inspections that fire related, not, we're not talking about septic systems. Uh, we're talking about specific fire inspections that that would be firework stands, it would be a general building inspection to to look at it for fire and law safety code issues and things like that. We do foster home inspections, which is a fire-based inspection. All those things, uh, nursing homes have to have state annual state required inspections. The foster does the daycare do, uh, there are some businesses that just want the inspection. Some want the inspection because before they buy the building, they want to know which is it up to code and stuff. So we have the fee in place. My stance on it, it's my job to do it. I'm the fire marshal. I'm requested to do it. I'm state certified to do it. So I go do it. I don't know who takes the money or not. But that that part is, my job is to do the inspection. The court has determined whether we charge a fee or I do it for free. That that's that's on the county and the court to do that. Uh, so I don't have, I don't feel like I necessarily have a dog in the fight to say who said who takes the money. It just you offset fees. And so somebody needs to put a fee and I I've got people now knocking on the door, calling the phone saying, well, I'm trying to get the inspection done, but I can't pay for the inspection. So we we just need a place that we can tell people, here's where you go to pay.
Roughly on average, how many of these do you do a year?
I'd say between a dozen and maybe thirty, somewhere in there. But you know, fifteen, thirty a year between. And that's firework stands, that's foster homes, uh, that's daycare centers, uh, that that's a few random businesses that pop up with a sprinkler system or fire alarm. Cause we don't, we don't have the fire code adopted out here that would mandate somebody do things like a sprinkler system or something in their building. But there are some places that are gonna be because of the the nature of their business and then insurance is gonna require it or there's other for outside influences that are gonna say, you know, if you want insurance on this or or whatever reason, you're gonna house people in here, you're gonna have sprinklers. And so it it's not just us, but then somebody has to, the authority having jurisdiction which falls back on us has to ensure that that thing is is put in edge design. You know, and that's 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 all I do is go out there and make sure the drawings they turned in that were approved, this system was installed accordingly. Or the foster home meets all the criteria so safe for children to occupy.
And when what happened, Susan, is that the people came in to pay and and they were told that, no, the county doesn't require those. So you're paying for something you don't need. So we're trying to save your money. So.
That's not exactly what happened. First of all, I got the first one. It was a tattoo parlor person who was fixing to open a a new location. And it was in precinct three. And so when they called, they were asking about the D B A, you know, the name of the business and stuff like that. What they need to do on that. Then they asked me if they need any other permit. And I said, not that we know of, but the tattoo parlor. I said, I don't know what the state requires. I said, I don't believe that the county requires anything, but go ahead and call over at the fire marshal's office. They called it. Now I spoke to the wife, the husband called over at y'all's office and was told that they need to pay. It was either two or three hundred dollars. They didn't know. But they called us back. And so we pulled our sheet and we're like, okay, hold on. What exactly are we trying to do? Like, is it a branded building? We're thinking fire inspection with a sprinkler. He said, no, I'm just leasing this building off of eighty or whatever. And so he goes through that and we're like, no, you don't do that with the owner of the building. Usually he either already had it done, but normally the renter doesn't do it. And so we sent them back over to your office to try to clarify that portion of it. And then he bounced back over that he's coming over to pay three hundred dollars. Well, we're trying to figure out where he fits in because he doesn't fit in with the nursing homes. He doesn't fit in with the any anything that was on our list. So of course I've got five different girls in there and they're like, hey, are we supposed to be charging? Like everybody that did the D B A in our county who rents a building. That's where the problem came. And so the guy called like three or four times over to their office, called at least three or four times to our office. He's telling us he bringing us money, but we don't know really what he's trying to do and where does it stay in our sheet? Really, when he's paying.
Well, this very first one says top of occupancy, all commercial or public occupancies other than certain tops listed below seventy-five dollar fee.
So every D B A is renting a building.
No, no, he needs an inspection because for him to be a whoever governs tattoo parlor with the state of Texas, like a barber shop has to pass a state inspection to be open as a salon or barber shop. There's some agency that goes and looks at tattoo parlor that's state regulated and part of their their inspection is they want to see a fire marshal's report to say that you have proper egress and you have fire extinguishers that are gonna work and things like that. Not a sprinkler system or anything. Cause that's not mandated. But they just want.
And everybody that we have in our system that have the D B A can use leasing a building.
No, because the state wants him to have.
He didn't say the state needed him. Well, I mean, I'm the one who told him unless the state has.
That's that's where we need to get this this worked out. What what we're talking, none of these are required by the county. That's what we need to know. But it don't, that's what we're trying to say. Anybody that wants an inspection can get one. If a guy walks in there and says, I'm D B A and I want a fire inspection, then we can go do it.
Okay.
If he wants to pay it towards servants.
They may need it for insurance. They may need it for who knows what.
And and that's okay, but that is not what the case, this situation was nothing like. The guy didn't know anything about it. He was told when he called their office, it was either gonna be two to three hundred dollars. And we were trying to figure out where on our sheet that he getting the two or three hundred dollars. Number one, that's what we're trying to figure out. And who is mandated?
Okay.
I mean, we don't know. We're, we don't keep up with the state on what they want them to do.
What what I'd like to recommend and and with the courts and y'all's permission is to to take that fee schedule and when they go out there to to the fire marshal's office, the fire marshal checks what they're doing. If it's A, B, C, D, whatever they're doing. And they fax that back over to you or they give it to that to that system and they bring it back to you and say, here's what we're paying for. And 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 then you'll know, just like a subdivision, you'll know what. I understand it since we're trying to go forward. I'm we're not, I'm forgetting what I'm trying to stop the next one, not this.
Okay, I mean, we're gonna take the money, but we need to know exactly what they're paying.
That's what I'm asking you. If we do, if we do a, if he provides them with a sheet on what they're getting, would that suffice your office where y'all take the money? Or I don't know why Kenny's office, if they're just dropping off a check and they're not getting anything in return, why why can't the treasurer's office take it? But that's the that's the duty of the treasurer to take money. And and you're talking about fifteen, thirty times a year. So that's all I'm trying to is get everybody to work together. I don't know if it's possible.
I mean, I I wanna make sure I'm understanding. So if a person calls or whatever, they say, I need a fire inspection. We're gonna send, that's what we do. And then they're gonna do the sheet. And if they do the sheet, I don't care. I'm the fifteen people who are taking the money. That's why we have the sheet. But I feel like that's not where this is gonna go, but we'll do it. Get the sheet going, circle it, sign off on it, have them bring the money.
Well, Sean, what's the state fee for inspection like that?
I don't know. I don't know if they.
See, we we gotta find out that because she she gotta know what fee to charge.
Well, we have a.
Well, it's, does it fall under that specific seventy-five dollar schedule?
The state that this this, the state doesn't care where you get it, but they they want a fire inspection. They don't care if you go hire an independent contractor that that's qualified to do that and you pay him a thousand dollars. Or you can come to a county that has a fire marshal, you can pay what our fees are. If we don't have a fire marshal, you can go to the state fire marshal and you'll pay their fees. All the state wants to see on these things that are required is that somebody that's qualified to do the inspection made it. And they've got that inspection back.
So we can set the fees. Will that seventy-five dollars suffice? So what was the the sum about three hundred dollars? Where did that come?
I don't know where that's come from either, because even even on this schedule, uh, an occupancy less than ten thousand square feet is a hundred, ten to forty thousand square feet is one twenty-five and more than forty thousand square feet is two twenty-five. So I don't know where that.
You know where the three.
I don't know where the three hundred come from. Uh, there's other, there's other ones that are based on like a fire sprinkler system or a fire, uh, fire alarm system that's gonna be installed. That's based per device or or and square and square foot and all that calculates in for all that. So then it ranges differently uh, based on those.
But in this case, the seventy-five dollar fee would suffice.
Yes, sir. Because it's, we're 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 just going, and I I see where the confusion on their part could be of on this list, it says all commercial or public occupancies other than certain tops listed below. The immediate one below says occupancy less than ten thousand square feet. That's a whole lot of buildings. So why is it jumping twenty-five? Just for occupancy less than ten thousand square, everything's less than ten thousand square feet. It's not more than ten thousand. So why, you know, uh, that one's kind of doesn't really make sense why we go seventy-five for one and then a hundred. So there's confusion on exactly what they're, what they put, but.
I think, I think the easiest thing would be a check off list that you talk, that'd be very simple. Just put down there. Okay, this and this and this and that adds up to a hundred and ten dollars. Give it to.
Most of these people that come in and we have, I don't count any parlor, tattoo parlors. He's the first one who's.
And and I don't know.
Question. And that's why we were like, we've never done that before. We, I'm telling you, we do need that.
I I haven't either. I've I've never done a fire inspection for, I've never done a fire inspection because a barber shop wants to open up. But when the guy called saying, I need a barn, but I I'm not gonna question why he needs or wants a fire inspection. And I mean, I'm not gonna say, well, no, you don't. Just, I mean, cause then when something happens and we didn't go, he he's gonna say, I asked him to come look at it. They did.
Well, and that's exactly where he wanted to make sure that he was doing everything like he's supposed to. And his question was, do I need? And I think we're not gonna know that. Call the fire marshal and ask that question. He said, they call the office and ask that question and said he needs to pay us two to three hundred dollars. And so we're, all I'm thinking is, oh, my goodness, we have all these tattoo parlors.
Okay, but and that's not the only one, though. We have a set of drawings that was delivered yesterday that she tried to turn them in here and I sent an email to two of your employees saying, charge them two hundred dollars. And when she dropped them off, she was told by you, um, that those don't vote here.
What was?
Some fire, it was fire alarm plans for the for a building that's being outfitted with a fire alarm to this point.
Don't remember saying that. She will talk to me.
Okay, she's got your business card. I mean, she she.
That conversation at all with anyone, but have her call me and I'll be with her immediately. I mean, and as long as whatever you're sending over has your signature and all of it, and I know where to put that money, we'll do it. But at the end of the month, it needs to balance out. I don't want to be charging one person something and then somebody else. We need to speak across the board. And so if we do the sheet, I think what we find.
Well, it won't be across the board because there's different things.
Yeah.
It's gonna be different prices, but I'm saying.
But you just mark another.
Would you?
No, we don't.
Ten thousand or above or below.
I mean, some people can just come and request an inspection. And a church, for instance, could say, hey, we'd like you to come to a fire inspection at our church. Make sure everything looks right. Okay, that's gonna be this much money, hundred dollars, two hundred, whatever. There could be another church, twenty thousand square foot that opens up and I don't have the authority to go tell them, hey, you can't do anything until I inspect it. Because we don't have that ordinance here. So we're not gonna say that if the district's getting inspection, all of them's getting inspection, or if this tattoo parlor gets inspection, all of them's getting inspection. It don't work like that.
Okay. All right. I'll let the girls know. As long as we have your signature.
And the check off.
Yeah. Right on the sheet, but not.
Well, we do, we we, the fee sheet. There, if we go through that every budget here, I mean, we're getting ready to go into budget. Is that true? You got twenty twenty-one? There's a, I don't know.
We have the twenty twenty-two in our office.
And as soon as we get in budgets within the next three or four months, within the next three months, we'll, we'll go into it again. And we always present it because you you got your fire marshal fees, you got your sheriff and hospital fees. And we always send them out and then we approve the fee. We'll send that to you, let you look at it. We do every year. Let let everyone look at it and say, is there anything you need to be adjusted?
Okay, so we can maybe clean up some of this.
You can set it anyway.
It's not real clear on.
Yeah, right now you can't change the amount, but if you would clean up the verbiage on there on how it should read.
Yeah, maybe it could be simplified a little bit too.
And then make that, just make a deal out and where all your, your, all your department has to do is put who you're dealing with, what they're paying for. And and initially at the bottom and either fax it over here or give it to them.
They come in every other day, so.
And then that. They're gonna clarify that and 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 like Kenny said, if if that's all they're doing is handing a check, you don't have to go through the clerk. They can go to the treasury. Now, if they're getting an affidavit, part of onsite service, whole different. They're they're getting, they're getting something back from the, that they have to get from the clerk shop there. So that's a little different deal. Just making a payment here and that that's okay, isn't it, Kenny?
Okay, take money. Okay. So it sounds like if you just have the affidavit, what they need in the fees and get and they can either bring it, I think that probably. And get and they can either bring it with them, I think that probably the best, uh just bring it with them. When when they come and they drop it off in there and and pay for it. Uh I don't, does that work for everyone? Okay, I don't think there's any action.
I've got a decent one where you know, where can we get money for it? I I mean. Because the state's gonna look at it and you have a fire alarm, you know, so we're gonna be held accountable for. In inspection, I I just need to know where until people go.
Okay.
And that and the if if you over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the law allows the county. To require an inspection with tax report, but we don't have that many people.
We need to join that county. Till then, all we can have is see whatever the state.
Thank you.
Okay, uh no action on number nine. We'll move to item number ten, discuss and consider canvassing of the twenty twenty-two. Primary runoff election results.
Okay, so y'all have that the the numbers on page. With the page three. And those are your totals, so you've got. You have thirty-nine thousand five hundred and five voters, actually registered voters. And you can see how many.
Thirty-nine thousand five hundred and five registered voters in Vanette County?
Yeah.
Okay.
And your total ballot test was two thousand seven sixty-three.
So. Are we canvassing the results or?
Do what?
Are we canvassing the results?
Yes.
Of the election?
Yes. That first page is just the total of everything and everything behind it with five precincts.
Did you?
You know, one box may have had three different boxes.
Yeah. Okay, so what was the total?
Total of that. And then right below that, we should, it shows the bright, how many Republicans and.
That's what I'm saying, you know, I have said percentage of of voting.
And it doesn't matter how many people turn it out, it still sign the mental work.
Yeah.
Boxes, you still have to make sure you have enough people there and you never know. But overall, the election. Would they give them complaints about the box not being open? Bush Republican, another two, I don't know what it suggests, which I did suggest, but that is not my fault.
That was Lance. Yeah, they there was, there was some, there was some. They had people here in Kent had to go to ballot. Didn't they? Didn't the people here in Kent have to go to ballot to vote?
They did, and I was trying to get two locations, those two, get Valva and the Ken library and then also we have been a leader. Or and I was trying to get maybe Dan. Hopefully, you know, our chairs will.
So is there a page in here? That tells of all those that voted in Vanette County?
Yeah.
Page thirty.
Well.
Click down seven hundred and sixty-three. No, I'm talking about who got the votes.
Yeah.
It's after, it's after page three, it shows. The attorney general raised, commit the the general plan.
This way, well, we run the numbers on the state reports.
Well, when I canvassed the votes, I wanna I wanna canvass who was elected, not how many people voted in Vanette County. Uh.
Right.
I wanna. Okay, but we haven't mentioned it, we haven't talked about it. Uh like, I I don't mean to what page is, uh it's. Like the attorney general, total votes, if that's a. If that's the case for uh for the attorney general, Ken Paxton got one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh George Bush received six hundred and twenty-six. Uh commissioner uh of the general land office, uh eight hundred and fifty-one. Don Buckingham, uh one thousand five hundred ninety-nine. Uh road commissioner, Sarah, how you say that last name, Stronger, Joker, Joker. Uh one thousand fifty, Wayne Christian, uh one thousand four hundred and fifty-five. Now, that's the total for all of Vanzack, right? Okay. Because that's what I'm moving to canvas the election result, not how many Republicans voted, Democrats voted. I mean, that's that's the vote, okay?
And it goes on more on the next page.
Well, what is there a pay? And that's what was my question. Is there a page with all the totals of all them boxes? Two, three, and two and three. Is all the state.
Needs to have all the state elections on. You read the first.
Okay, just read the second one then.
On lieutenant.
Oh lieutenant governor, Mike Aldner, uh one hundred and twenty-two. And Michelle Beckley, seventy-three. For attorney general, Joe Jaworski. Uh one oh two. And Rochelle Mercedes Garcia, uh ninety-one. Or controller of public accounts, uh Angel. Uh Vega, uh sixty-two, Janet Dunney, hundred and thirty, and Jay. Uh what would you say there? Right, land uh commissioner of general land office. Jay Kilbert. Key word?
Yes.
One twenty-nine. Okay, Sandra Grace Martinez, sixty-six. Now, that's the Democrat. Read off the Republican Party at first. That's the Democratic Party that's voting there. Okay, did I miss it? You got the total vote on the next page.
Yeah.
Okay, I believe we've covered it. I think we got it covered. Is there a motion to canvass the primary run of the? Canvas the twenty twenty-two primary runoff election results?
Part of this report, yes.
Yes. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Webb. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider appointment of P twenty-five RFP scoring committee. Uh Commissioner LaPrade, you want to address that?
Yes, gentlemen. Back and again, when we started the radio project, it began with a committee that just researched the radio. Project and moving forward with it. And a committee consisted of myself, then Sheriff Hendricks, so now Sheriff Carter just took his place. Joe Maddox, the C I D lieutenant, who's familiar, very familiar with radio equipment and sheriff's office, the dispatch supervisor, Jennifer Baum. And uh we brought Scotty in as I P director because the new radio systems have a very large I P components. And this group has been the one that's handled the radio system. We done the the scoring committee for hiring uh. Trot and associates. And we've done the scoring on the dispatch furniture. But now that we're heading into the high dollar end of this with the RFP for people in our radio system. I was thinking we might ought to go ahead, even though it's not required, I'd like to get the court's approval that this committee stands as scoring on behalf of the court.
And I would add that Chad did come talk to me about it and. We have been questioned before on scoring. They wanted to see the criteria or whatever the. They they, after we awarded an RFP. Then you have companies come back and they wanna know, okay, how how did you score it and how did we work? I did, I don't want them to question the committee that did the scoring, so I wanted, I told Chad, I think it's it's safer. It covers our base to go ahead in the commissioners' court, appoint this committee to do the score. And then uh we'll we'll go from there. Says Pearson, okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? You got a second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving these as your uh current radio uh scoring committee, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approved renewal for the twenty twenty-three tax uh health and benefits program. And twenty twenty-two Blue Cross Blue Shield uh rights, uh Jennifer. Uh Je- Jessica. Jennifer is gone.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Well, it is time for us to do our renewal for our medical insurance. And I went through a webinar and learned some additional information. The prices are increasing for our county, we're going in by six point five percent if we stay. At the same plan that we have current. Vanette County is under a grandfather clause. So I researched that, find out exactly what that meant by staying grandfather versus looking at the option one and two separate. And if we switch from a grandfather clause, that means that. Our deductibles can change and that means where we have a very, very good deductible amount now, we could be paying next year. A three thousand, then a four thousand, then a five thousand and. And looking also, your co-pays can change, your prescription benefits can change. Whereas currently us staying grandfather, meaning we follow the same guidelines that we're in now. Then we're locked into those things, which is an excellent, excellent benefit. You don't find these type of. Uh the uh deductibles and and co-insurance maximums and things like that, hardly anywhere. I can speak from experience. So, I mean, it's it's very good. I recommend that we take the renewal rate for the current plan of the eleven hundred dash G two. Which is going to increase us and you'll see the sheet I gave you, based on an average of a hundred and eighty-seven eligible employees. Our rate is increasing by forty-seven dollars, so over a twelve-month period, that's gonna be five hundred and sixty-four dollars an employee. Which is going to be a total increase estimated based on account fluctuation bill to bill, an average of a hundred and six thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. So that's where we're we're what we're looking at. So you take our rate of six point five percent and if you look at a total state average. Insurance for the coming year, state averages are going up anywhere from nine point eight to thirteen point eight percent. So we we actually are in in a very good place, even though it is going up. The tax pool altogether is sitting at a five point nine. So when they break it down, they are looking at things like the number of claims that we filed, but and it's based on the high dollar number claim. I honestly don't know where the part starts, but you did have a breakdown where it did show some claim numbers in there for you. That's where out of the pool amount, it broke us out to the six point five, six point five percent. So I did wanna point out, even though that looks like a high dollar amount that we're increasing with the right at a hundred thousand dollars. That when we go into budget workshop, we're gonna present on our retirement, which is going to be going down. For the county percentage that we're gonna have to pay, our percentage is gonna be less and it is going to offset that almost evenly. So that'll be exciting news to discuss.
So we will absorb this increase and receive a.
Yes.
Reduction.
Yes.
Well, I do I do believe it's very important that we stay grandfathered in.
Yes, it is extremely important.
Come out of there, man, it's skies the living. Is there a, is there a motion to uh approve these? Uh Commissioner LaPrade, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, is there any questions or discussion for? I know Sandy's writing because she's, we're 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 getting ready to go into those workshops and we'll be calculating this, you know, through the.
Yes.
Through the expenditure, it's another hundred and six thousand dollars.
Yes.
Uh increase uh to health insurance. Which equates. Down to tax increases.
It it does. Our benefit program is amazing. We, Vanette County has done a wonderful job on on where you walked up locked in at. And that's, you know, back from two thousand ten when you were able to become grandfathered. I don't know how, when y'all adopted it, but I'm sure it was somewhere around that time frame. And so I I would never wanna see us do anything but that for. For our employees, that that adds to what they what they make by so much and I try to encourage that. Whenever I talk to the new employees and let them know about that difference in that dollar amount that they may not see on their paycheck. But they're not gonna take it out of their paycheck to pay for it. And I try to explain that as a super benefit, because it truly is income.
There it is. And uh Vanette County in the past decided they was gonna go out on their own. And get a company and they did, they did. And they they at best, well, the first year they got it and give them a cut right there. That second year, at best, you had a supplemental policy and I think you probably working for the county back then. That you didn't have much insurance. I mean, but I mean, it was, so we was very pleased to get back to the tax. I think murder would even go with that.
We got, me and Kelly Smith went went down there and got on our knees and begged the tax to let us back in.
I would have gone with you. I would have gone with.
We we uh we got back in. Yeah, that was in oh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
So then you grandfathers in two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
Susan, did we vote on the other?
No, no.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carry.
Thank you very much.
Item number thirteen, discuss and consider an approved lease agreements concerning belly dump trailers. Uh from Brazos Trailers uh for precinct one. Mr. LaPrade, you'll address sport.
Yes, gentlemen, this is a standard Brad's trailer as we've been doing on the belly dumps. I've got one trailer that's ended its turn, ready to start the next one, so I gotta trade it in on more. Plus, I picked up another haul truck, so I'm getting another belly dump. And so I just asked the court to approve these leases.
Okay. And lease amount is three thousand for each one of them?
Yes.
Total of six.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's six months.
And that's a six month lease.
Yes.
Okay, that motion by Commissioner LaPrade, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approved lease extensions concerning belly dump trailers for Br- from Brazos Trailers. For precinct three. Uh Commissioner Pearson, you'll address.
Same song, al- almost the second, little different verse. Uh we have, we've always leased two trailers, two belly dump trailers.
We have, we've always leased two trailers, two belly dump trailers from Brazos. Uh, our lease is up also. Uh, normally we turn them in every three months and get another trailer. That's not at our request. That's at Brazos Trailer's request. They do not have any new trailers available, so we're just going to keep the current trailers that we have for another three months. And, and we'll carry on. It's just like Mr. LaPrada's, that, uh, precinct three's price is a little less than that. Only because Brazos Trailers is located in the great precinct parade back down and and they, they give us a little, they give a little bit of a bar discount.
Uh, but you'll, you'll drive them a little safer.
Uh, our lease is, uh, per trailer is eighteen hundred per year.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yes.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider reimbursement for lodging and mileage regarding training for precinct one, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner LaPrada, you want to grant that?
Yes, gentlemen. Normally this just comes with our training budget. Whenever it comes to court, I want to bring this in there for approval for a particular reason. This class is related to road bridge work. This is related to the radio project I'm heading up. With the people in our project, I'm very familiar with the needs of the first responder in the field, and I've done that for twenty years here in the county. But when it comes to the dispatch component of it, there's not a lot I know. So I got a class, I've done got a balcony paid for. Where I can go and learn more about the dispatch into this project. So as we go to finish now the development implementation, I understand more what they need in that area. And so what I'm asking the court to do is to go ahead and, uh, let me pay from the general funds contingency line item for this lodging and this mileage is over this class, so it doesn't familiar my road bridge. Uh, hotel rooms are going to be a one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents for the five-day class. So I've got a five, I've got a five-month stay. And then the mileage will be a hundred and fifty-nine dollars down to college station back. Will be a total of one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-two.
You want to come out of your contingency?
Well, I want to bring in all the general funds contingency, so I don't affect road bridge. So it's not a road bridge class.
So move Pearson. You got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion?
Each, each department has their own training.
We're moving to my training.
Yeah, I think so. That'd be the best. Move to his training line item.
You know, uh, you have a training.
Do I have one?
We couldn't move it to the, to the, to Don's and, and it would charge out of you. But, but it's county training. It's, it's going to benefit the, it's going to benefit the county. It, it may not be quote unquote judge, but it's county training. Uh, it's going to benefit the county. This is a one-time deal. This is just to help us on, on the preparing for this new radio system. So he knows, somebody on the court knows some more little about dispatch out there to know what the needs are there.
I would think they could.
Yeah, we could do that. Know if they'll do that or not.
I think that we're
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
Every department has their own. And there is nowhere most
I wouldn't want to move it to Roland Bridge because that's going to confuse people. We, we've always, at least for the last five years, we don't pay for things on Roland Bridge that are not associated with Roland Bridge. So.
No, with, uh, I believe Chad got a grant from the city of Brazos Lane.
He did.
Many conflicts coming in from Grant from Brazos Lane and county paying the
Thanks to Grant for the fourth deserved.
Through the city first. I think John wants there to be an issue with the city of Brazos Lane, not calling for it all.
Well, they're, if they don't, if they don't pay for it, they'll be oh, they're paying for the training itself. All we're paying for is
Yeah, um, yeah. Have the agenda for that conference. Um, we have the mileage to that conference, we have hotels at that conference.
Well, I'm sure Chad can provide all that. The, for the conferences and, and what he's always said, the conversation. But I'm sure he can provide documentation here to the mileage of, uh.
We have the mileage.
Bring in the class certificate and everything. And the way it got paid for, I was still a member of the Grand Street Fire Department. And so we used a fourth deserved grant to vouch for the teens to cover a class to the A and M Municipal Training School this summer.
Why are we paying taxes on the room?
We always do that.
Well, I pay the state tax.
There's, there's a tax that we have.
Yeah.
You can get it's not.
Okay, that's six percent. Okay. Okay. But I still believe we need to figure out where we're going to pay it from. Here, wins a class.
Oh, a class at the end of July. And I was actually going to just bring in a receipt to reimburse them all.
Yeah. And that's what, when he, when he brought it to me, he said, I just want to go, bring it and do it reimbursed. I said, well, you probably get it approved before we do this. Let's get in front of it. Uh, because if you go and then bring a receipt and then it's not approved, then it's on you. Uh, and do y'all want to wait? In time. Well, we, well, we got a workshop. We could ask him if we could take it out of that ARC money and if you want to put it in. It's an exciting, but it, it's exciting time when you put it in, if you put it road bridge and for this one time, the other, you put it in the county judge.
Believe we're road bridge, we run it through the court. We know what money has to come from. It just passed through Roland Bridge. We didn't use Roland Bridge money. And what happened to me is to reflect that if we were to put it in my thing.
That, that's true. That's, that's the only thing. If somebody just, just got all expenditures and that's all they looked at, they didn't have what we talked about today. They would make the assumption that it can, that Roland Bridge paid for.
Oh, I have.
I'm good on my account.
It's, it's, it's dispatch training. I'm sure you could move it to the sheriff's office. And, and all he's got to do is let Joe know what he's doing, that he's going to dispatch training to help on these radios. And it's, and you put it in sheriff and, and it'll come out of that line item when he, when he gets his reimbursement.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, uh, make a motion that, uh, we agree to pay for it? Uh, number, number one, first approach would be get it out of our ARC money. And second would be from the, if that doesn't work, get it from the, uh, sheriff's office.
So we'll do, uh, we'll tell our, and we'll be contingent to the sheriff, but.
Yeah. Who made your motion? Chad Rock.
I made a motion.
Okay. You mean your motion to
They're big, right? We'll, we'll check on that. Or if it's available or not, we'll move from contingency to sheriff's office and pay for it out of their trunk.
Okay. Now you seconded it.
I seconded, I seconded the amended motion.
Okay. Okay. Any other question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approved interlocal agreement from Edco for the statewide emergency radio infrastructure, uh, grant.
Yes, gentlemen. I put this one on here. Uh, this is kind of a follow-up to our last workshop when we discussed, we need to actually formally accept this radio dispatch project on Edco. So I got with, uh, with Barry, with Troy, and we got with William, with Grant Works. And they got with, uh, the net at Edco. And we have, uh, an interlocal agreement here that outlines what we plan to do with the funding from the cog and how it's planned to spend. The cog has signed off on it. I agreed to, all we got to do is agree to it. So I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Got a motion to approve their interlocal agreement from Edco for the statewide emergency radio infrastructure. Is there a second grant? Is there a second?
Second, beard.
Uh, I got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
How much is this grant? It's going to be five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approval, uh, Texas Smart Buy annual membership shift patient fee of a hundred dollars. It's just a membership of Texas Smart Buy, uh. Is there a motion to approve that membership fee so we can be a member of the Texas Smart Buy? For another year?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item, item number eighteen, discuss and consider and approve a debt book software for the auditor's office to implement a guest, uh, G A S B, uh, dash eight seven and all leases contract service agreements to be approved by the court if new or renewed. Uh, Miss Hill, would you like to address the court?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner. Um, this G A S B eighty-seven is, if you're not familiar with G A S B, G A S B is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is a non-governmental organization that creates reports that they think local county government should include in their financial statements. So this G A S B eighty-seven is a, uh, it is a rule that any leases, like the Brazos Trailers that you guys approved this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
They have to now be listed in our financial audit every year. We have to, um, I'm not real sure what we're going to be doing. This, this software is going to help me. It is a part where we, um, we have to amortize, uh, have an amortization on each including the pop yours that we're leasing. Uh, right now we've identified thirty copiers. Uh, we have postal machines here at the courthouse. We have one juvenile. We have one with adult. We have these belly dumps and it's not just leases, it's lease source as well. So we lease the vans and our department, I think we have a lease on a tower. Uh, we're going through all the records right now, just trying to locate leases because unfortunately there's not a book in Vincent County with leases. So my office is practically trying to go through paperwork, go through minutes, go through financials to locate all of these. And this software, this company was recommended by Patilla Brown. We, uh, they set up a soft, they set up a webinar. Uh, myself and all my ladies have been doing these webinars. We've had three. And once the court approves this, we'll have four to, to actually implement the software. And, um, Patilla highly recommended this debt book, wrote this debt book software. And they are actually going to take all of our leases to, to begin the software. And they will go through every lease and get it set up into the system. Now what we're hoping for is that it will, number one, create records now for the county. We will know whenever, every lease we have and when they're, when they were at the beginning and when they expire, so that we can start. Because now any department that has a lease is going to have to come through court and get those approved. So that they're in the minutes and my office can pick them up. And then flip side to that is next year in twenty twenty-three, the G A S B ninety-four will start implementing all the software that we pay for. Those as well will become a financial part of our financial package. When we first thought, it's going to be a nightmare. So, you know, any, any, any anti, uh, any contract that we sign, LGS, Nada, anything. We're going to have to start keeping them in this software as well. So the cost, we got a ten percent discount because we're Patilla, because of Patilla. But it is an annual cost. Now I went up to seventy-five leases because I have no idea how many leases stand that count. I know we have thirty copies. So the break was fifteen to seventy-five. So we're going to start with seventy-five and that cost is with a discount, eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So we're going to, I don't want to be negative. I don't want to be ugly, but we're going to have to pay for this software to put one sheet of paper in our annual financial book. But if we don't do this, then we won't be in compliance. Patilla will, uh, write us up, Vansik County for being out of compliance and that affects your rates when you go to try to borrow money, it affects your credit rating. So you know, we always want to be in compliance and do what we can to, to be there. So I'm just coming to the court this morning to ask you to approve the software. And then I do have a budget amendment in the budget amendments to move that money to Scott so that he can, uh, because he's also including it in his next year budget, because it's going to start becoming an annual cost.
How much did you say it was?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
And they will set everything up for me in the beginning. And then as we approve leases and they come through the county, we will have to start putting that in. They're going to teach us how to put that information in and you know, then it will become my office's responsibility to manage the software.
So, like, who did lease the Brazos trailer? Is Brazos trailer the one entry on the aisle at seventy-five or is each individual trailer one?
And that's an, and that's an answer I can't. We're going to send everything down there and then they're going to evaluate it according to the G A S B rules and tell me. Because that was my same question on the copiers. We have thirty copiers leased with Rico. Is that a lease or is that?
That's why I'm asking.
And they can't tell me on the webinar. We've asked that question and they're like, we've got to get them all here and then we will evaluate and tell you.
So what's the next break of those seventy-five? We got to pick up more.
I don't think we'll have over seventy-five. But like you talking about the leases that you're going into with fleet leasing, all of those are going to be on there. I don't know if that'll be one. I don't know if that'll be one lease or sixteen leases.
That's what I'm saying, we made what we said about.
One lease should describe everything.
Well, I don't know how to, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I'll just be honest with you, I do not know. Up to the software.
Well, I know on the two trailers that I just got, I've got two leases, each trailer.
But with y'all, and see, that's another thing, um, that you have to look at. If it's under a year's lease, it's a non-reportable GASP. But if it's a, they have to look at, does it can, does it have an extension to it? If it does, and you continuously renew that, I, they're going to ask me how many years you're going to plan on renewing that. Which might, you know, I mean, it's, it's going to be a big challenge.
More red tape.
That's all, more bureaucracy costs the county another ten thousand dollars. Just keep that at some point in time.
Hopefully, it will create, and, and we don't know for sure, we did ask the question. Hopefully, it will create a, generate a report every month where we can say what lease is expiring. And you know, we can get with that department head and say, hey, you know, the lease expiring, and he's going to renew that lease.
Yeah, because that is an issue right now, that's an issue, because you've got your law library leases with, uh. You know, Nexus Leases.
See, that will all fall into the GASP ninety-four.
That's right.
Next year.
Yeah.
And, and you know, I have people come to my office all the time, do you have a copy of that lease, do you have a copy of this lease? We will scan those leases into this software, they will be available. To where if somebody comes in and asks me, do I have a copy, because I'm like, well, you know, county clerk's quarter record, I'm not. But now they will be scanning into this, to that system, and, and we, we won't have to go to Susan before we can pull it up from that software.
Well, at least it'll be their software, because the ones we got don't work.
We hope this will work.
So, yeah, we hope.
But that, that was my question, I'm, I'm pro Patello Brown, but if we change our terms. Well, we're going to have to change software.
What we, what Patello is telling me, uh, in which John and myself and Travis. When they come to do our outside audit, I have to hand them. To, I have to hand them the sheet that's going to go into the book, it has to be finished, completed. Here's the sheet, though, that suffices this compliance, they're not going to help. Because some of the, some of the entries that are in our book, they do help me with, like, one of the Gaspys that y'all didn't even see this year past that we had to do. It dealt with all of the fee offices that have checkbooks. You know, in the past, we've just given them our balance, and they verified at the bank. And in the back of your audit book, it has each department and the balance that was in their checking account to September thirtieth. Well, this year I had to go through and create an Excel worksheet that showed every. Transaction that happened through those checkbooks. Yeah, I mean, you know, that, that was a big deal, because we have upwards to fifty checkbooks. And I had to go back through every one of them, and documenting every check and every deposit thing that I checked. And y'all didn't see that, but they helped me create those reports, but they're not going to have to do these. It's too massive.
Okay.
Motion will allow Sandy to move forward.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada. To approve the debt book software for the auditor's office.
And Judge, I hope y'all, the court will put something out, because we do have a lot of people that sign their renewals themselves, they're really not supposed to. And, and they're ones that I don't know about. So every renewal, if anytime there's a new lease or renewable lease, it's going to need to come to the court.
Yeah.
And that needs to be remitted out to all of them.
We have a motion as second, any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider requesting funds of the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. This is those funds that we re, I've always just signed it, we request those funds from the, it's the unclaimed. Co-op, electrical credits, uh, can be used for, uh. What are they, the US?
The economical.
Economic development, this is those funds, uh, I was hesitant to sign the system, if you look on that second page. After the agenda or the first page of it, request her to be submitted by Commissioners Board. So I wanted to run it through the court, get permission to sign that request, those parts. I would make that motion, is there a second? Got a second, any questions, discussion?
For, uh.
The unclaimed capital credits, do they come from electric, uh, uh, our electrical system?
Okay, not from ours, it's from, I think, the whole state. Statewide, okay. Yeah.
It's all co-op. Phone company co-op or whatever.
Well, it says here, uh, capital credits received from electrical co-ops. Uh, electrical co-ops back to counties, uh, but it's, we, we've received it, that's what we give the Veterans Memorial. Uh, we have Canton here, we have Will Point, uh, and we, there's quite a bit there to help, but, and, you know. And we give some to the Children's Advocates Center, uh, is there a motion to allow me to request that? Well, I made a motion, that's, all in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number twenty, discuss and approve Vansik County Emergency Service District number one balance sheet. For the year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. You have the balance sheet before you. Dropped a little bit, but they still have. Uh, maybe there's a motion to approve that, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPrada, any questions or discussion?
Uh, all these, uh, emergency district are required to turn these things in.
Well, some of them have to have an audit, if it, if it's above a certain amount. They have to have an audit, uh, but if it's under that, then they can do this, they can do the balance sheet here. Okay, all in, all in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approval fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments.
There's a bunch of them, but I'm like, motion we approve.
Sandy, you said that one was in here? Okay, there's a motion to approve, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government. And approval entry of same in the court minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, do you have any comments?
Uh, you know, we got seven of our nineteen reports in, but it's the first meeting of the month, so we're fine, I make a motion we.
Okay, got a motion, is there a second? Second, Pearson, second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion about the monthly reports submitted? Being none, all in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried, item number twenty-three. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, motion by Commissioner Melton, uh, I'll second it. Uh, all in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried, we are adjourned.
You don't want to lie, you can have a man.
No, he just, he is going to just, uh.
Probably project maintenance or seven, yeah.
This modern house thing for the news world. They all get the same thing, no, but.
That's bull on the same net. Yeah, maybe a little bit. I noticed that, I noticed we're not doing. So we're going to sing four songs, then, I guess. He's going to be here some, he's going to be there some, but it's not your fashion. I need that, right, you know, the older women in, in choir, I don't stand up for, you know, fifteen, thirty minutes. They get you shaking, you know. We need a round, have an, in our room, this is county. And so, right in there, that was. Yeah. Want you? Most signatures was the five, but don't go there, if she seemed to go down here, she would signature on it.